At approximately six thirty seven. Commissioners, you received your February fifth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Were there any changes, deletions, additions? If not, can I get a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes as they are. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Under all business, we have the preliminary final land development plan application for five 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 South Twenty Fifth Street. This is zone institutional. It's filed by James Skinner with the Commonwealth Charter Academy Charter School. It's to demolish, it's going to demolish a portion of the existing school building on site and redevelop the property as a school with a larger building footprint and expand site and access improvements.
So the planning commissioners may remember that at la- at last month's meeting, the Planning Bureau had recommended a continuance to discuss some various outstanding issues with the applicants. We did meet with the applicants and with the city engineer to address those. And we confirmed, we clarified some of the uncertainty regarding the project. We are treating the proposed use as a school. So things like the off-street parking requirements will be continue, are like continuing from the prior use as, as a religious school. And because of the nature of the use and the number of employees that'll be on site, it does not trigger their requirement for a traffic impact study. In addition, the applicants have addressed the primary comments from the Planning Bureau and from the city engineer's office regarding the relocation of the entry driveway to be across from Berry Hill Street, to which creates a four-way intersection there at Twenty Fifth and Berry Hill Street, which clarifies turning movements for both vehicles and pedestrians. And the applicants have also provided a sidewalk along the front edge with South Twenty First Fifth Street, as well as a pedestrian walkway into the entrance of the building. So from a site layout perspective and a site configuration perspective, the pla- the applicants have addressed all the issues from the Planning Bureau's perspective. Now, the other aspect we did ask them to do was to go out and engage the community. They have done that. And the documentation of that outreach and the petition of support the applicants had has been provided in your packets. So from the Planning Bureau's perspective, we are changing our position on the application from one of continuance, of course, to a recommendation of approval based on the changes made by the applicant and the outreach they've done to the community. Beyond that, the applicants may want to provide a little bit more background on what was discussed at the community meeting and about some of the changes that have been made on site. So at this point, I'll hand it off to them.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names, relationships with the project, and your address?
Sure. My name is Mayor Patel. I'm with Lofner Patel Developers. We are the owner's representative for Commonwealth Charter Academy. And my street address is four zero four five Thicket Lane, Harrisburg, one seven one one zero.
Matt Plant with Arm Group, civil engineer on the project. It's forty-six hundred Lena Drive, Mechanicsburg.
Hi, I'm Bill Sarah. I'm the architect and representing Sigma Seven with the architects and engineers for the project. We're at ten East Forty Second Street in New York City.
You gentlemen heard the staff's report. Did you want to add anything to that? And also during your community meeting, could you bring us up to date on that?
Sure. Mr. Knight was right in that when we left last time, we had two outstanding issues. One was the meeting with the engineer and Mr. Knight. We accomplished that and we've reworked the plan to comply with their requirements. The second was the community engagement. We went door to door to every property that's contiguous to the school and met with, I'd say, out of about thirty homes, we talked to twenty families. And they all supported the project. We laid out what we were going to do. We showed them a rendering and a site plan, asked them if they had questions, had some fantastic discussions. Everybody was really engaged, really excited about the, the progress in the building being renovated. And they signed a supporting petition to that as well.
Any other dates from? At this time, I have no questions. I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners if they have any concerns or questions. And I'll start with Commissioner O'Toole.
No, the only question I would have had involved the community outreach. And it sounds like you did a very decent job with that, so I'd like to hear it. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ray?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Merrick?
I don't have any questions for the applicant, you know, based on the additional information they provided. It's very thorough. Looks like they've done a great job addressing some of the concerns or things we talked about at the last meeting. I have a question for staff. Based on the revisions that have been presented to us, some of the additional information, there were a number of conditions that were up for. Wouldn't we be cha- get removing some of those conditions at this point and revising our, what we'd be voting on?
Well, yes. But I would say that the applicants have revised the site plan to meet the conditions of the Planning Bureau's prior case report. As noted, the first condition was a traffic impact study that is not required given.
But that shouldn't be a condition to be.
No, it would be a recommendation of approval from our perspective because they've revised the site plan to include the conditions of our previous review. So we would be recommending that the request be approved as submitted.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner, if you're, and I had the same question. If, if, if we could get a clean letter that removes those requirements and then adds the one that we had to do a meeting with staff, which we did, that might, if, if it's something that's necessary for the next step.
Yeah, so I didn't rewrite the case report, just a bit of a time crunch. Had I done that, I would have just recommended approval, a straight approval without conditions. Again, because the applicant had revised the site plan to address those conditions. Again, the relocating the driveway to create a four-way stop, four-way stop with South Twenty Fifth Street and Berry Hill, having a sidewalk along the front edge with Twenty Fifth Street, having the pedestrian walkway into the site, reducing the height of the fences from eight feet as proposed to six feet, which they agreed to do. And then the community engagement. So the applicants have done it. Had they presented that to us from the start, we would not have had those conditions or recommendations on the plan. So we, so it is our recommendation that the project as submitted be approved without conditions.
Okay.
Because those have already been incorporated into the revised design.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I think it should just be clear for when it gets to city council. So still when city council reviews it, they know, you know, they don't need to be paying attention to like, oh, no, they didn't do X, Y, you know, they didn't do a traffic study. We can't, you know, and they're asking questions that would be no longer pertinent.
Right.
To the case. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions.
Commissioner Mackenzie? Commissioners, if there's no other concerns or questions, can I get a motion?
Just a heads up, yeah, before going for a vote in public.
Oh. All these people here. If there's anyone from the public floor against this project, please stand and state your name and address. And I'll start with the center. And then I'll go to my right. Okay. There's no concerns there, commissioners? Can I get approval or nonapproval? Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded for approval of the project. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda under new business. It's the variance application for two thirty-six North Second Street. It's a zone commercial neighborhood filed by Two Pines Productions LLC. And Second and Pine Ventures LLC is to establish a nightclub and/or dance hall use on site and request relief from the applicable specific criteria.
Yep, sorry about that. And just want to make a note that the next two applications are by the same applicant and for the same general proposal and requiring the same relief. The application for twenty, two thirty-six North Second Street, the applicant's proposing to establish a nightclub and/or dance hall use. The proposal requires ZHB approval of two variances. One to allow for the proposed use per section seven dash three oh five point seven of the zoning code and one for relief from the specific criteria in section seven dash three oh nine point two DD one of the zoning code, which requires that such uses not be permitted within five hundred feet of any dwelling unit. This is an after-the-fact application. The property at two thirty-six North Second Street is a point zero eight acre lot featuring a three-story, ten thousand four hundred and twenty-eight square foot structure, which was constructed in nineteen forty-eight. Property is bounded by Pine Street to the north, North Second Street to the east, the property at two thirty-four North Second Street to the south, and the property at one twenty-seven Pine Street to the west. This attached structure features elements of a mid-century architectural style. Character-defining features include the brick facade, substantial entrance featuring a recessed entryway flanked by floor-to-ceiling storefront windows, a prominent metal awning above the first floor that supports colorful uplighting, prominent band of windows on the front and side elevations, the substantial three-story metal firescape over the sidewalk on the side elevation, and the decorative artistic sunburst light fixture on the roof. The main entrance features a divided light, divided light wooden doors with metal accents set in a simple metal frame and topped with infill panels featuring a large sconce. It is recessed and flanked by large metal windows. A second entrance on the front elevation features three full-view metal doors topped with a large plate glass transom and an infill panel. Entrances on the first, second, and third floors of the side elevation feature solid metal double doors accessed by the fire escape. Veneustration on the second and third floors primarily features ribbons of two-over-two steel hopper windows set within concrete frames. Those on the side elevation are spaced with portions of brick facade. Structure is topped with a flat metal roof featuring the aforementioned artistic sunburst lighting feature. Though the property differs markedly from other buildings in downtown generally and on the same block specifically, this differentiation reflects the architectural and economic diversity of downtown Harrisburg and contributes to the vitality and texture of the streetscape. Thus, the property contributes significantly to the architectural and historic character of the community. Planning Bureau staff recommends that the request be approved with the following conditions. Prior to the zoning hearing board meeting, the applicant must host a community engagement session with residents within five hundred feet, discuss the proposal, answer questions, and solicit support. Prior to the zoning hearing board meeting, the applicant should provide documentation regarding any proposed soundproof, proofing measures planned for the building. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. Although the nightclub or dance hall use requested by the applicant has been operating on-site for several years, as determined through review, has not been operating on-site for several years, as determined through review of all resources available to the Planning Bureau, such use to previously operate on-site under multiple different businesses establishing a history of such use that supports its re-establishment. As the applicant notes, the building in which the proposed use will be re-established is of sturdy concrete and brick masonry construction, which provides natural soundproofing and features an open floor plan that supports a music venue. Finally, with respect to the relief from the specific criteria regarding proximity to the nearby residential units, the Planning Bureau notes that the existing regulation would effectively preclude the establishment of nightclub or dance hall uses anywhere in the city, including in the downtown center zoning district in which the use is permitted by right. And to expand a little bit about the history of this proposed use, because I know in the application, the applicants have asserted that the app, that the use has been operating on-site for several decades. When looking at uses or issues such as this, where you're looking at re-establishing a, a non-conforming use, we refer to section seven dash three twenty-one point seven of the zoning code that discusses abandonment of non-conforming uses. And if there's been an abandonment for twelve consecutive months, then to re-establish that use, you would need to bring it into conformance with the existing zoning regulations. In looking through the history of this property, we looked at various city records and specifically spoke with the tax and enforcement officer for the city, as they are the ones that maintain both Burke and Town licenses that would describe what businesses were operating on-site, but more specifically are in charge of the city's amusement tax, which is paid for live music events. So it can often be difficult to, you know, say exactly when a use or a particular aspect of a use stopped within a building. But in this case, in speaking with our tax and enforcement officer, he confirmed that since the comedy club that was previously operating on-site closed in twenty fourteen, there had been no amusement tax paid on, for the property up until twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three was when the applicants began occupying the site and, and operating their business. And at that time, the beginning of twenty twenty-three, I had worked with the applicant to bring this very zoning relief application through the process. And in fact, the applicant had submitted the variance and it was scheduled to be on the March twenty twenty-three agendas. But at that, in February of twenty twenty-three, the applicant reached out and indicated that they were looking to establish the restaurant and bar aspects of their business first and then would come back and submit the zoning relief to establish the live music aspect. And after that happened, after the withdrawal, in which case we had some communication back and forth where I confirmed that that was how they wanted to approach it and they concurred, there just had not been a follow-up application submitted. So that seeks to provide a little bit of background on this property specifically and on the proposed use, which has been operating for the last couple of years. So I just wanted to make that clear. I'm not sure if it was entirely clear in the case report that that was the history of the property and that is also why we determined that the variance applications were needed to re-establish the nightclub or dance hall use that had previously been operating on-site.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names, addresses, and relationships with the project?
Yes, my name is Eric Hume. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Saxton and Stumpf, and I'm here on behalf of the applicants.
Justin Browning. I'm the owner and operating manager for the property, forty-six twenty Custer Drive, Harrisburg.
Thank you.
Craig Dunkel. I'm Justin's partner and owner in the establishment. And my address is thirteen seventy East Lisbon Road, Mechanicsburg.
Okay. You gentlemen heard the staff report with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
Yes. In fact, I can tell the, the commission that my clients already started a lot of the work that was already referenced in the conditions. There's been substantial communications with all the neighbors, including the neighbor immediately. Several of the neighbors in the area, there's been some sound testing just to verify that the soundproofing is, is, is adequate. And there's been a lot of communication and it's positive.
Okay. Even though I know where that building is, is there any people living above the nightclub?
No. You know, one of the things to point out too, just to give you an idea on the soundproofing, and this is something I had to ask my client about. If you look at the property from Second Street, you know, you have the windows on the second and third stories. But those windows, there's actually, there's drywall and the soundproofing.
Yeah, layer of soundproofing, a layer of interior sheet concrete, and then a layer of drywall. So it's substantially soundproofed.
But there is no one.
There's nobody living there. It's like, it'd be like a cave. No windows.
Commissioners, that's the only question I have at this point. And I'd like to know if you guys have any concerns or questions. And I'll start with Commissioner McKenzie.
Yeah. Yes. As one of the residents within five hundred feet of the building, I've looked at the decline of Restaurant Row in two different ways. One, I've missed the prostitutes in my back parking lot, the having to tow vehicles out so I can get in and out of my property, cleaning up vomit on Saturday and Sunday morning. And I'm not saying it was at your club, but it was, we went through a lot of years of hell in that location. So I guess the question, first question I would have is, what are the hours of operation in defining a dance club versus a bar or anything else? Will you be carrying a liquor license on this?
Yeah, we've been operating. Excuse me, yes, we've been operating for the last several years.
So this will be expansion of that?
No.
The current liquor license or?
Everything is in place.
So this is basically an after-the-fact, seeking to readdress the application that, you know, should have been.
Okay, I missed, I missed that, I missed that point. I mean, I know you've been in there and it's been good to see it. And that building was designed originally in Arthur Murray's dance studio, which is why it was so well-built back in the day. The, one thing I would, I would note is that there was some use on the upper floors, but the lower floors until two thousand and three were, were a hardware store. Because that's when I bought the ladders, which I now have installed dead, the rolling ladders. So I remember when that, when that went in. The one question I have is since the city has decided to retract providing any police protection downtown to any of the restaurants, even off, even your own pay type things, what's the plan now?
So we've had, and we've always had, security in place for the property. We've been operating the last few weekends post the St. Patrick's Day event. And we haven't had any issues. And we also have other establishments on the West Shore where, you know, we have almost zero.
Right, but you may have more cooperation from the police and the city government relative to providing security, you know, late in the evening in the West Shore.
For this particular property, we operate with fifteen security staff.
How many, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Wow, okay.
We also have two other properties on Second Street that have additional security. The police detail was something that the police asked us to provide or to pay for. It wasn't something that we necessarily asked for. It was something that was started by Cavioca Entertainment Group through running Sawyers and Bourbon Street. So it was carried on from his, let's say, regime. But with them not being there, it seems to honestly be less agitation for the people outside. I'd say we do a fairly spectacular job keeping things calm and happy and pleasant inside. For what goes on beyond the sidewalk, we, we've submitted some ideas to the city, but that would be another thing to address another time.
And that's more of a question not directed at you folks.
No, no, I absolutely understand.
It's directed for the record and the fact that we're on video tonight and that our city has decided to turn its back on the downtown and the rebirth of that stretch. And the fact that you guys are paying for fifteen security, it's great. But as you say, it goes beyond the sidewalk into the issues we dealt with through years. And I would not want to see the downtown come back to life without that support from the city again because it was miserable. You know, we've been residents there for twenty, twenty-three years. So we've lived through the good times and we've lived through the bad times and picked up the bullet casings at, you know, at three in the morning in, in River Alley. And it was pretty rough for a long time. So like I say, if this is the continuation of what you have been doing, I haven't, you guys have not been a problem. But I just wasn't sure if this was a change to something different because we had some, a couple of years ago, we had a group that kept coming through to do dance clubs that were going to be open until six in the morning and avoid liquor licenses by membership and some really crazy things downtown. morning and avoid liquor licenses by memberships and some really crazy things downtown, which ultimately created a lot of problems. I just want to be sure this isn't that, and it isn't, so.
I've been operating another establishment down there for, we just did nine years. It's called JB Love Drafts, and so I've been there with you.
Yeah, I love the skeleton.
Through all of those good times, thank you.
When you put it out, yeah.
But for the particular thing that we're talking about now, this is continued use. The next thing is a change of use.
Yeah, okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Chol.
Yeah, my question is, Jeffrey, the second condition is that prior to the zoning hearing board meeting, the applicant should provide documentation regarding any proposed soundproof measures planned for the building. So that's not requiring him to do any soundproof.
No, I think they've referenced in their application that they're going to have soundproofing and discussed like the soundproofing characteristics of the building. It's as much for, for our record, in case somebody wants to ask in the future, as it is for even a future such use that may occur elsewhere of like, well, what does soundproofing look like? If the applicants are doing something like that already, it's something that we could provide to future business owners who may be looking to do something similar, and especially if it's effective soundproofing, we'd like to make sure that that's, you know, continued elsewhere, whether that's downtown or wherever.
Yeah, I'm not so concerned about the two thirty-six, I'm more concerned about that with two thirty-four, because I know there's apartment building, apartments on the other side of the wall there. So I guess the question would be more, more appropriate then, so.
You're talking about the Benmar there, or whatever they're calling it?
No, I'm talking about Second Street.
It would be Zembees.
Above Zembees.
Above Zembees, okay, yeah.
We did a sound test, excuse me, we did a sound, we'll get to it, but we did a sound test.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so I have no further questions.
Commissioner Reed?
I have none.
Commissioner Merrick?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions on this one. I think it's pretty straightforward, actually.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions.
Is there anyone from the public for against this project? And I'll start with you in the middle. And I'll go to my right. Do you come to the microphone, state your name and address?
Sure. Thank you. Ed Jarrow, J A R O C H, fifteen twenty-one North Second Street, apartment one, up in Midtown. I just want to stand and ask you guys to support this. I now understand that this is really already in place. I thought this was maybe a change, but I have no relationship with the applicant. I just want to thank you for investing in the city. I think like Commissioner McKissick has said, downtown is in a jam right now, and I think anything we can do to make the planning or whatever process applicable to a gentleman like yourself who's invested millions, I'm sure. So for those reasons, I ask that you support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Could you come, do you have a, come to the microphone? State your name and address.
Frederick Hunziker, one zero one South Second Street, apartment number eight zero seven in Harrisburg. I've been patronizing Justin's establishment for several years now, and I completely support what he is doing, even if it doesn't a hundred percent comply with the zoning ordinance. I even supported when he tried to move the live music at JB Love Drafts to the second floor. So I support him on this project, and I support him on the project at two thirty-four North Second Street. And I also implore for the city to amend the zoning map to make those blocks of North Second Street part of the downtown center zoning district. And I also started a petition online to get, to encourage the city to reinstate the police patrols that they recently stopped doing. So if anyone is listening, I encourage you to go onto change.org and sign the petition.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello? I'm Mark Santana. I've lived at, on the two hundred block of Liberty Street. I moved downtown around two thousand. I was moved down here when I was twenty-four, and I'm now forty-eight, so I've lived half my life in the city of Harrisburg. I moved down here originally because I was working for the Attorney General's Office. I got tired of paying the parking rates, so I said, if I'm paying a hundred and fifty dollars to park in the garage, I might as well just get a place down here. And so I bought my house on Liberty Street. And when I worked for the Attorney General's Office, that was around two thousand, that was the beginning of the Reed era of the Restaurant Row. At that time, the gazebo room was a boarded up building. Justin's, a place where JB's is at, was the Catholic shop. There was nothing going on downtown. It was Stocks and Scotts and Dewey's, and the Pep Grill were the only spots to go. So I mean, I really enjoyed whatever Steve Reed had done to develop the economy of Second Street, and man, for about ten years, it was really booming, it was really happening. And I think when we had to sell to get out from underneath the incinerator, two thousand and thirteen, SP Parking came in and crushed happy hour, and then when the Commonwealth closed in two thousand and twenty, that crushed lunch. The only thing left is dinner, and I think there's this Harrisburg, it's, I like to call it economic abstinence, because it's just the economy kind of has destroyed what, it's no fault of any business owner, they didn't create the pandemic, they were doing a good job, and, you know, they had the state workers that were creating, having lunch, happy hour. All that's pretty dead. I understand that, you know, the zoning code is what the zoning code is, but I think we really need to do what we can to try to help the business owners that we have left. It's a miracle that the people that have, are down here are built with a hang-on. Mr. Browning's gonna invest two million additional dollars. He's moving a business from the Carlisle Pike to downtown Harrisburg, which is kind of the reverse of what most people are doing right now, and I think that's an honorable thing. He's pretty much put his whole life at risk to support downtown Harrisburg. He's, as Ron Campbell Bianca is sort of retiring, he's kind of stepping into his shoes. I think he has big plans to work with Haristown Development and the Downtown Improvement District with Todd Vanderwood to try to be, you know, a stakeholder, and, you know, if you guys would permit his use, I believe that his rising tide would raise all the boats down here. He has ideas for a marketing campaign, and I also, not only am I a downtown resident, but I've also worked for the city of Harrisburg. I was a budget manager for two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when Linda Thompson came into office, me and a bunch of other people retired at that time. So I mean, I've been walking these Second Street for a good ten to fifteen years. I saw the Restaurant Row go up and down. I know Mr. Browning is trying to do what he's calling downtown reboot, is that correct?
Restaurant Row reboot.
What is it again?
Restaurant.
Restaurant Row reboot is his marketing campaign. And not only am I a downtown resident, but I'm also the president of Capillary Neighbors. Our jurisdiction goes from Forster Street to Walnut Street, Third to Front. So we, our group constitutes all five hundred feet of the, what the zoning would have to, the zoning requirement for the neighbors. And I kind of was caught by surprise with this meeting, so, and our next Capillary Neighbors meeting isn't until May fourteenth. So I, we didn't get to take our chance to get a unanimous vote on this, but I put out the proposal that I, that Mr. Knight had created out to our board and asked anyone if they had any, I told them that we couldn't have a vote, but I asked if anyone was in opposition of it. Everyone was kind of excited about the project, excited that we were going to have a chance to have entertainment that was going to be live, like, and he's taken over the diners, he's planning on doing entertainment there as well. So I think it's really a chance for us to support someone who is taking a risk in a time when it's a scary time to take a risk. And I, Mr. Browning had reached out to me about gathering community support for his project, and I told him that we'll help facilitate some kind of meeting where we can invite our neighborhood group to come out and meet with him, and he can tell everyone of his plans and try to quell any concerns any might, anyone might have. So I'm asking you guys to please to support his, both of his proposals.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Not commissioners, can I get a motion?
Is there any conditions?
Yeah, the public engagement and providing proof of soundproofing.
I'll make a motion to approve with the two conditions.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in seconds for approval of this project with the two conditions. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Good luck. Thank you. Oh, there's another one. I was wondering why you're not moving.
We can just change seats if you want.
Jeff, is this the same?
It's the same use, same relief from the zoning code, just for the neighboring property at two thirty-four, so.
That's a good enough report.
I spend a lot of time writing these property descriptions. So the applicant for, for two thirty-four North Second Street, the applicant's proposing to establish a nightclub and a dance hall use. The proposal requires ZHB approval of two variances, one to allow for the proposed use per section seven dash three oh five point seven of the zoning code, and one for relief from the specific criteria in section seven dash three oh nine point two DD one of the zoning code, which requires that such use does not be permitted within five hundred feet of any dwelling unit. The property at two thirty-four North Second Street is a point one six acre lot featuring a two-story fifty-seven hundred and eighty square foot structure, which was constructed in nineteen sixty-eight, although the applicant's documentation indicates that was a date of substantial reconstruction, and the original date of construction was nineteen seventeen. Property is bounded by the property at two thirty-six North Second Street to the north, North Second Street to the east, the property at two twenty-six North Second Street to the south, and the properties at two eighteen North Second Street and one twenty-seven Pine Street to the west. Its attached structure features elements of a mid-century architectural style. Character-defining features include the brick facade separated into six bays by large concrete pilasters, the concrete ornamentation in five of the six bays, the prominent metal awning running the full width of the building, the large illuminated sign featuring the name and logo of the former restaurant in the center of the facade, and the wide concrete cornice with First Federal Savings and Loan Association carved into it above the three northernmost bays. Main entrance features a full view metal double doors within a simple frame flanked by side lights, which are all topped with plate glass transoms. There are two similar sets of doors at the southern end of the building, although neither feature side lights. Infiltration otherwise is limited to five plate glass windows on the second floor with concrete sills and splayed brick headers. Structure is topped with a flat rubber roof. Front of the building features a wide sidewalk, most of which is enclosed for outdoor seating by a fence permanently anchored into the concrete. Although the property differs markedly from other buildings in downtown generally and on the same block specifically, this differentiation reflects the architectural and economic diversity of downtown Harrisburg and contributes to the vitality and texture of the streetscape. Thus, the property contributes significantly to the architectural and historic character of the community. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. Prior to the zoning hearing board meeting, the applicant must host a community engagement session with residents within five hundred feet to discuss the proposal, answer questions, and solicit support. Prior to the zoning hearing board, hearing board meeting, the applicant should provide documentation regarding any proposed soundproofing measures planned for the building. And finally, the applicant must remove the permanent fence enclosing the seating area in front of the building. I note that was kind of like a longstanding issue we'd had with the previous, previous use, you know, during the winter when snow gets piled up, it really constricts things, and especially at times of greater pedestrian traffic, it can really create issues. So removing those would open up the sidewalk, the full width of the sidewalk for pedestrians. The Planning Bureau staff request, recommend the request be approved with the following reasons. Although the nightclub or dance hall use requested by the applicant has not been operating on site for at least several years, as determined through review of all resources available to the Planning Bureau, such use did previously operate on site under multiple different businesses establishing a history of such use that supports its re-establishment. As the applicant notes, the building in which the proposed use will be re-established is of sturdy concrete and brick mason reconstruction, which provides natural soundproofing and features an open floor plan that supports a music venue. Finally, with respect to, to the relief from the specific criteria regarding proximity to the nearby residential units, Planning Bureau notes that the existing regulation would effectively preclude the establishment of nightclub or dance hall uses anywhere in the city, including the downtown center zoning district in which the use is permitted by right. And again, to provide a little bit of background, this is similar to the previous case in which there had been a history of music, of music, live music on this site. Again, in speaking with the tax enforcement office, they confirmed that around two thousand and thirteen or so was when the live music kind of went away at this particular site. I forget the, I think it was Bi Club beforehand, when it was Dragonfly, I want to say, at this location. Yeah, and I, and then it was Fed Live after that, but it was only really operating as Fed Live with live music, I think, till two thousand and fourteen. I researched, I like Googled both of those uses, read through a bunch of entries, and that was basically what I could piece together from what I was able to research there. Our tax enforcement office confirmed that that was the rough timeline. They did say they had engaged with the owner of the former business on site, and they said that they were giving the proceeds from some of the music to Central Penn Food Bank at the time, and he did check with the food bank, and they confirmed that they were getting checks from that owner. But they did keep on top of this stuff over the years. Again, they're making sure the amusement tax is being collected, and right about early two thousand and nineteen in January, they made a notation in our system of basically they hadn't seen any events for a long time, and so they were deactivating the amusement tax for this property. So similarly, we consider the nightclub or dance hall use abandoned as of about January two thousand and nineteen, and so it's been about six years now to where they're re-establishing it. And so, you know, kind of the same considerations and issues are inherent in this particular project as with the former one.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Gentlemen, you heard the report. Are you acceptable of the three conditions?
Yes, all the conditions are acceptable.
Did you want to add anything to the report?
The one point I did want to mention, and, you know, Mr. Dunkel had mentioned this a little bit earlier, there's already been some sound testing. They, I believe it was a hundred decibel sound test.
One hundred and three.
Hundred and three decibels were played inside this building, and they were in the stairway at the Zembees property right next door, and there was no sound transmission whatsoever.
And this, this was with Angelo. Mr. Otwell, I believe you spoke with him previously, he had some initial concerns, because he is the only neighbor that is connected to the building besides us on the other side. With Justin Hershey, who was one of our expert witnesses, who can stand and go through his report quickly, just for everybody on the board. In addition to us doing the sound test, that is prior to installing our total soundproofing measures that we're planning on implementing for the building, he wanted first to make sure that he's got glasses hung up on the bar side, he didn't want them rattling. When we put the sound to the max level, he walked over, asked his bartender if he heard a sound. He said, I don't hear anything. So he was very excited about that. And then we were walking up the stairwell where the walls connect, and we couldn't hear anything in, in the stairwell to the units. The residential units so happen to be on the other side of the stairwell, the only unit which butts up against our wall, that it could be a dwelling, it's currently his office. And we walked into his office, it was dead silent when we were in there. If you put your ear up against the wall, you could, excuse me, you could hear a small amount of sound, but he said like, that's nothing that even bothers me. If you're having a conversation, you can't hear it, and that is prior to our substantial soundproofing package that we're planning on putting in, which we have a report for.
Do, can you want to hear the report?
I think if, yeah.
Could you state your?
Yeah, this is our expert witness.
Could you state your name and address and your relationship to the project?
My name is Justin Hershey, seventeen East Kuver Street, Mechanicsburg, PA. I'm the owner of Hershey AV Solutions. I am an audio and acoustical engineer. I'm involved in this project, as with several here in Harrisburg, including XL Live, Appalachian Brewing Company, and Temple Bethel in Midtown. We have come in and done an acoustical analysis of the room of, of both floors as they exist now. We created actually a sound pressure level of a hundred and five decibels A-weighted in the room of the full audible spectrum, to which was not transmitted to the neighboring building. However, we are still continuing with our plans of treatment of six hundred and forty square feet of treatment behind where the live acts will play, as well as an additional one hundred and eighty square feet of treatment that extends to twelve inches for bass frequencies along the bottom of the stage. So we are looking at an eighty percent reduction in the energy we will be creating in the live music, as well as limiting how loud the bands are allowed to be inside. I was also involved in Dragonfly when it was open, and we were achieving much greater sound levels with Dragonfly than anyone accepts anymore these days. I did meet with Angelo, I'm not going to attempt to say his last name, although I try my best with Greek next door. We did a sound test with him as well, and he informed us that he wasn't hearing anything at all, let alone over where the residences actually are. at all, let alone over where the residences actually are. I will be involved in this project from beginning to conclusion, as well as when the operation happens, by staffing it with engineers that will control the acoustic levels inside the building. We are also addressing the glass in the front with transitional movable acoustic treatment that can be positioned in front of the windows for times of events and moved remotely when there are not events, so that you can continue to see inside the building, to continue with the appearance it has now with see-through glass.
Okay, thank you. With that, commissioners, I have no questions. I think this is pretty straightforward, but I'll start with Commissioner McKinsey.
Yeah, again, I do remember when it was open and operational and that, and the saving absorption sounds a little light for the amount of sound I remember in there many years ago, but I will defer to your experience, because people need to be able to not have physical pain, you know, so that's where you go with it. And one of the things when we were in architecture school many years ago is just, and I'm sure you're looking at the flammability on the sound absorption, you know, that has been many nightclub fires.
I can throw that as well. So, the treatment we're using has a flame spread index of five at the most, and a smoke develop index of five. All the rest of the treatment has a AFB UL 723 compliant with a flame spread index of zero and a smoke development index of zero. No banners are allowed to be hung by bands unless they are inherently flame resistant.
No fireworks either, right?
No, absolutely not.
You know the one I'm talking about, terrible, terrible thing, yeah. But the one thing I do, even though I generally support this, I do have a problem with how the application's been written, because it does appear to indicate that a variance is worthy because of Harb restrictions. I find that hard. I hate to have that in the record. I would want to make sure that that's somehow made part of our motion, that we are not accepting that Harb is a valid rationale for not maintaining, you know, for not receiving a variance. That's the ground base of what we're trying to do with the city is, you know, maintain our historic heritage.
Yes, of course. Just to, full disclosure, I created the first submission myself, submitted it, got feedback from Mr. Knight, and that's why my attorney's with me, and we actually submitted a re-application.
Okay. Oh, okay, I'm looking at the one you sent me. Yeah, because I have likewise have the issue with, you know, using financial. Financial is not a standing ground, at least in my book and I think in our past history and I think legally, to create a variance, you know, on a building, you know, the financial hardship. The building could be redeveloped. Finances are not supposed to be part of the decision-making. Geometry, location, a number of other items is certain valid, but property's shape.
And just to be clear, the Planning Bureau was not referencing Harb as a justification more than...
No, this was in the write-up. I understand, I will make that clear.
Yeah.
But this was contained within the application, and I, that's just not something that we want to be seeing come in here as a basis for variances.
Correct. And with respect to the economic aspect, I know that's largely been a position that this board has held, as well as the zoning hearing board, but I do know some of the legal counsel for previous applicants before the zoning hearing board have referenced previous legal cases in the state. I frankly don't know where that threshold is myself, but I know that economic hardship does exist as a justification for zoning relief. So, I just wanted to kind of make a notation of that, that there is a justification at some point when it hits that, so.
Right. Okay, that's all.
Commissioner Otwell?
Yes, Angelo's fine with this, so am I, so. And I do commend you for being so conscious of my friends at ZMB's.
Commissioner Reed?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Merrick?
I don't have any questions. I just appreciate that, you know, once federal tap house closed down, another business owner, you know, so willfully decided to step in and pick that up, because, you know, downtown certainly needs to stay vibrant and hopefully economically positive, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions, just making the statement. Appreciate the fact that you've already been proactive with the soundproofing, and it sounds like it's a very thorough process that you've already been through and will continue with, so thanks for that.
He's a sound nerd.
I can tell.
Is there anyone from the public who are against this project, sort of in my middle? State your name and address.
Frederick Hunsaker. I'm at 101 South Second Street in Harrisburg. I want to reiterate the, that, the comments I made last time I came up to the microphone, that I am totally in support of Justin's projects and his attempt to bring back Restaurant Row. And I am called upon the city to not only approve both variances, but I implore the city to bring back the police presence that clearly worked several years. I frequent Restaurant Row, and I've never once became a victim of crime thanks to the police. And I am also called upon the city to change the boundary line between the commercial neighborhood and the downtown center zoning district to go up a few blocks to include the buildings that have been traditionally nightclub use.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle? To my right? Okay. Commissioners, oh, I'm sorry.
Ed Jerk, 1521 Second Street, Apartment One. Just want to reiterate support of the project down here. I appreciate all the investment you guys are making as a taxpayer. We've got to get this downtown jumping again, so we can get people coming back to the city and for economic reasons, et cetera. And so, for that, I just ask the board, please approve whatever relief the applicant is asking for, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to my right?
Hi, I'm Mark Santana. I live on the 200-block Liberty Street, and I'm, for the sake of being redundant, I would like to repeat everything that I had said previously. And with the addition of, not only am I a tax accountant and a real estate agent, but I'm also a musician and part-time, and I've worked with Mr. Hershey in the past. He's a man of high integrity and a high expertise. I have, anytime I've ever played in a festival or a project that he's been involved in, I've always been happy to know that he's there, and I know that his work is going to be good and strong. He's always treated people with respect. I've never heard anyone say anything bad about him, and as far as the musician community's concerned, he's an A-lister, you know. Everyone is always happy that he's involved, and I'm happy to know that he's part of this project. I didn't know that until today. And I know my neighbors are happy that Mr. Browning is taking a proactive approach. You guys aren't asking him to do this. He came to you and said he was doing this as part of just keeping the noise down and being respectful of the neighbors and part of my group, the Capital Area Neighbors. So, we appreciate that from the applicant, and we ask that you guys give him a relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right? Did I miss anyone? Okay, with that, basically, I agree with everyone who's said about this club coming to town or redoing it. The main thing that stands out for me is that not only the owner is doing it, but he's doing it the correct way. He's not just coming in here and giving us a plan, he's correcting the sound resistance and other things that we've asked of him. So, that's very important. So, I'm very much for this project. But with that, commissioners, could I get a motion?
Joe, just one comment. I would be prepared to make a motion, but I would just want to ask the commission members if we can stipulate in the description somehow the caveat that we did not use the Harb district's existence as a basis for granting a Harb or a variance for a project. So, we're looking at the pre-existing use and the continuation, but not, that can't be a precedent. I would want to think we'd, after what we've dealt with over the years, what we'd want to see, and if you're agreeable, I would make a motion to approve with that notation somehow included, to make sure the zoning hearing board sees it and it's on the record.
I would put that as a condition as opposed to a reason for approval.
However, you know, yeah, that best, you think that's best handled, but...
If he's adding as a condition, I'll condition, and we'll say it's four conditions then. Is that your motion?
That's my motion, the conditions as noted, plus that is an additional caveat.
Okay, there is a second. It's been moved and second for approval of this project with the four conditions. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Good luck, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, this is a special exception application for 1605 through 1613 Market Street. This zone residential medium density is powered by Chris Franklin with Handel's Helping Hands Foundation. It's to construct a multifamily dwelling, use on-site, and request relief from the associated off-street parking requirements.
Mr. Jerk, let you know right now, I'll be recusing myself in this matter, it's a client of mine, and I ask you not to hold that against him.
Well, now that you've told him that.
Yeah, so, the next two applications are related to the same project. This is the zoning relief aspect of the project, and the next application will be the law consolidation and land development plan aspect. So, the applicant is proposing to construct a multifamily dwelling use with associated site and access improvements. The proposal requires ZHB approval of special exceptions for the proposed use per section seven dash three oh five point seven of the zoning code and for relief from the off-street parking requirements in section seven dash three twenty-seven point six of the zoning code. The project site is comprised of five vacant parcels totaling .15 acres owned by the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, which previously accommodated a small community garden with raised planer beds, although now features rutted barren ground that was used for vehicular storage, debris from the former community space, general accumulation of litter, and some mature trees along the southern property line. Project site is bounded by Market Street to the north, the property at 1615 Market Street to the east, a narrow grocer's alley to the south, and the property at 1603 Market Street to the west. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions: The applicant will receive approval of the law consolidation and land development plan submitted concurrently with the zoning relief application, and any departmental recommendations and/or conditions of approval applied to that review. The Planning Bureau recommends the applicant consider coordination with the owner of 1513 Market Street, a non-conforming lot which was approved for accessory parking as part of an unrelated project and features a variety of violations that require correction. And to expand on that a little bit, so that was the parking lot at the corner of 16th and Market on the south side. That was related to the Shalom House reuse of the Unitarian Church at 1510 Market Street. And as part of that, the zoning hearing board required them to bring that lot into conformance with the zoning code. It had kind of like deteriorated asphalt on it and no real access control. It was paved at some point subsequent to that, but they didn't bring the lot into conformance, putting up landscape screening, requiring the access from 16th Street, so right now people are basically just driving over the sidewalk at the corner there. I did add that condition of approval before I noted that the applicants had provided a letter from the church right next door at 1501 Market Street, which also has its own accessory lot on-site to provide parking. So, you know, while we are supportive of the request for full relief from the five parking spaces, if the applicants are able to provide parking at either lot, we would be, you know, happy, and that would, I'm sure, address some of the concerns of the neighbors as well. So, you know, we would still like to see 1513 brought into conformance, and we had maybe hoped that it could be done in coordination with the applicant here, but if they're able to have the, provide any parking at 1501 Market Street, that would be fine as well. So, Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons: The project conforms to the goals, objectives, and action items in the comprehensive plan by constructing a compatible infill development featuring affordable units in a vacant site along a priority corridor in the city. Project site is located in a mixed-use corridor with nearby residential, commercial, and institutional uses, and thus the proposed use should not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. The project is designed to reflect the use, massing, and configuration of the properties along the block specifically and in the surrounding neighborhood generally. Approval of the proposal will enhance the character of the neighborhood and improve the streetscape of the corridor by developing longstanding vacant lots with a new infill development and associated site improvements, providing affordable housing and demand throughout the city. And finally, the proposed development will add new residents to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends and grow a customer base to support local businesses.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you gentlemen state your names, address, and relationship to the project?
Zane Geist, civil engineer for the applicant. We're at 430 North Front Street, Wormleysburg.
Jeff, Jeff.
Oh, sorry.
Jamie and Harvey, On Hill Development, Charlotte, North Carolina.
Both you gentlemen heard the staff report with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to add anything to the report, or...
Nothing really to add, just looking, again, to Handel's Foundation wants to bring more affordable housing to the community. Great more impact.
Okay. I have no questions at this time, but I'll go to the commissioners with any of their concerns, questions, and we'll start with Commissioner McKinsey.
Yeah, I'm on a roll tonight, but no, I support the project. I wanted to speak out and reasons to support it. What we're dealing with here is a missing tooth in the community, and when, you're dealing with a lot of restrictions, you know, to be rebuilding and bringing that back, and that really reminds me a lot of the, I guess it was Sesquina Housing Initiatives, we did the project on the south side of Market Street many, many years ago, probably 25 years ago, and we gave, I think at that time, gave a full variance on parking at that site, and it's a little bit bigger, but similar in terms of its effect of in filling the gap there, and it's realistically what was there. It's, I struggle, as Jeff does, but there's really no feasible way to generate a curb cut off of Market Street there. Milk alley, can't even get a bicycle down it from the back, so I think you have a unique situation that doesn't necessarily extend itself into other requests for waivers that we see in here, and I just wanted to have that on the record, if we do approve this, that that would be my thinking anyhow. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
I have nothing at this time.
Commissioner Merrick?
I would echo Commissioner McKinsey's comments. I don't have any questions for this specific part of the application.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions, just wanted to make the statement, being appreciative of you doing the due diligence on the parking requirements to have a possible letter of intent for backup, so thank you.
Will go to the public, is there any one who are against the project? Let's start with the center. Go to my right. I'm disappearing. Two commissioners, I have no questions or concerns with this project. Could I get a motion?
Motion to approve with conditions?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval of the project with the four conditions. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen.
Not going anywhere.
Yep.
It doesn't count. Oh, there's another one. I'm just like, why are they sitting there?
Oh, Noah's Ark here, everything's in tubes today. Oh, Noah's Ark here, everything's in twos today.
Okay, this is item number four. This is the preliminary final lot consolidation of LDP application for sixteen oh five through sixteen thirteen Market Street, which is zone residential medium density filed by Chris Franklin with Handel's helping multifamily dwellings on-site. This is to consolidate, I'm sorry, the subject properties and construct a new nine-unit multifamily dwelling on-site along with associated site and access improvements.
So again, this is the land development aspect of this project. So the request is for the same, the construction of a nine-unit multifamily dwelling and associated site and access improvements. Property description is the same. And the planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant is required to receive a certificate of qualification pursuant to chapter twelve, one oh one of title twelve, affordable housing certification prior to recording the law consolidation and land development plan with the Dolphin County Recorder of Deeds. And that is because the applicant is taking advantage of the affordable housing bonus provided through that affordable housing program. The applicant should coordinate with the city engineer's office on the installation of bike racks in the public right-of-way. The bureau would recommend that such parking be located near the main entrance and sheltered if possible, and that the applicant consider a more useful design than the wave racks shown in the plan set. Those tend to be difficult to get up to. Just a vertical post with a circle on it is a very low-impact one that is pretty effective at locking up bikes to it. Prior to introduction to city council, the applicant will provide a formal photometric plan to confirm consistency with the environmental performance standards in chapter seven dash three thirty-one of the zoning code. The applicant must also provide information on the economic impact of the proposed development prior to city council review. That section just wasn't filled out in the application. And then finally, the applicant should consider a vertically differentiated facade treatment and materials that reflect the architectural elements of the surrounding neighborhood, and the inclusion of a substantial cornice atop the third floor to reflect the front facades of surrounding buildings. And the planning commission may recall that we had a similar condition for the recent approval of a similar project at twelve sixty to twelve seventy Market Street. And again, the vertical differentiation would make the larger building appear as three, or as the row home buildings that are consistent throughout the neighborhood there. And then having that cornice atop it would be similar. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. Approval of the proposal will enhance the character of the neighborhood and improve the streetscape of the corridor by developing prominent and longstanding vacant lots, constructing compatible infill development, and adding to the neighborhood's housing inventory. The proposed project will contribute to the city's need for affordable housing by providing nine new affordable housing units in two- and three-bedroom configurations, which will be certified and maintained long-term as affordable units. The proposed configurations represent a size of unit that is in higher demand throughout the city. Finally, the project will enhance one of the primary corridors in the Allison Hill neighborhood, adding new residents to the neighborhood, activating the street and community on nights and weekends, and contributing to a growing customer base to support local businesses.
Thank you, Jeff. Gentlemen, you heard the staff report with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
I have no question. Again, this is straightforward. But Commissioner McKenzie?
Yeah, I'm on a roll tonight, but I just, I just want to indicate support for Jeff's condition relative to a little more massing studies on that to make it a little more reflective of that particular neighborhood. One of the things that the series of images you gave us with your prior application was it really brought home what a wonderful porch neighborhood that is, and the delineations that are available there. And I understand they cost money, but there may be some other coloration or texture that can be done to just bring it a little bit harmony. We're not here to design it for you. I mean, that's, you guys will do what makes sense. But I think that was, I think that was a good addition to your report and conditions.
Commissioner Reed?
No questions.
Commissioner Eric?
Yeah, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. I didn't see anything from Capital Region Water yet. I'm sure they will provide more of a review. This, so on the backside of the property, there's a small patio area. It looks like there's no fencing proposed around that patio area, is there?
No, that's a, that's a good point.
Because then you have a stormwater basin, like almost directly.
Yes.
On it, that's about four foot deep.
Yeah, I, I'll have to look at the, the, if there's a requirement on, like, you know, the certain drop from, for a stormwater basin. I know four feet's typically standard, so I don't think there would be any qualms about putting up a small, you know, a fence in order to help protect any potential hazards from that in the backyard, but. It's a, it's a, basically like a, like a small, like a rain garden basin that does have, should have infiltration from what we understand from the Geotech investigation. But then, yeah, it has an overflow structure too, in case the water gets, you know, too high.
Okay, yeah, I, and we'll see, you know, what CRW comments, but I do have a, just a general concern about the patio, the size of it, and then having that grading and rain garden budding up so close to where people might be sitting.
Okay.
Right there, you might want some fencing or even landscaping barriers. I didn't, I didn't see, is there a landscaping plan, planting plan for the stormwater basin for that area retention basin?
There, there's, well, on the grading, or I'm sorry, the site, the site plan shows all the proposed landscaping. There's nothing specific to the basin itself proposed. It would be like a basin seed, you know, mix at the bottom, and then a typical, like a steep slope mixture, or something stabilizing the side slopes of the basin.
Sometimes, depending on who's maintaining the property, it ends up just becoming grass, and that becomes ineffective for really any retention. And then it becomes a challenge, a landscape challenge, I'll say, for property.
I see.
Unless there's some intentional, you know, typical plantings you might see in that area, like cattails, you know, wet shrubbery, like things like that, that could go in there. I just didn't see any indication on the plans of what, what would be going in there to help, just help facilitate the runoff and drainage. The only other question I had too was, so looking at the existing photos, there is or there was a community garden there? Is that something that's active on the site?
Yeah, I tried to figure that out too. You, you look back on it through Google Streets View, and it's clear that in previous years, there was more attention paid to the site. I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, COVID maybe interrupted whatever consistent attention. People were paying attention, maybe people that lived in the neighborhood that took care of it moved as a result of that. And, or, and I mean, these are HRA-owned properties, so maybe there wasn't an agreement, re-upped with HRA or something. It's unclear as to exactly what type of activity. It didn't, from my visit to the site, it didn't look like there was a lot of current activity on-site, or previous maybe in last year. So, it's tough to tell.
Okay, yeah, I was, if it were active, you know, right, if there was any sort of community commentary or, or public, you know, one way or the other, like, hey, you're getting rid of our garden, you know, and there was no engagement.
Yeah, we definitely went through the community, went petition also. We definitely have a, you know, kind of hand on that community, working in it, talking with the church. But we, we also went around with it, petitioning, got names on.
No one's piping up, so I don't think, yeah, might not be an operation. All right.
Not at this point anyway.
Right, right, okay. Don't want to be, you know, stealing people's tomatoes and carrots this summer. All right, I don't have any other questions, thanks.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions. Only thing I was going to say is despite the possible confusion about whether it is or is not a community lot, it would obviously be good for the city if these vacant lots kept back onto the tax rolls, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who are against the project? And I'll start with the middle. And to my right. Just listen less. Okay, commissioners, could I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval of the project with the conditions. All those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Oh, sorry. One exception. Motion carried. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're on item number five. This is a zoning map amendment application for twenty-six oh one North Third Street. This is a zone INS, is filed by Greg Lee Holquist with Pennmark Harrisburg Holdings LLC. It's to change the parcel zoning designation to the downtown center zone. Jeff?
So the applicant is seeking an amendment to the official zoning map in order to change the parcel's designation from the institutional zone to the town, downtown center zone. The property at twenty-six oh one North Third Street is a six-point-three-six acre lot featuring a sprawling medical campus, including a two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-four square-foot facility, which was constructed in nineteen twenty-six, and an eighty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-six square-foot facility, which was constructed in nineteen fifty-seven. Property is bounded by Wiccanisco Street, and the property at twenty-six forty-five North Third Street to the north, North Fourth Street to the east, Poli Clinic Avenue to the south, and twenty-six forty-five North Third Street to the west. This property features a sprawling institutional campus with three-to-six-story buildings that previously accommodated the Poli Clinic Hospital. Character-defining features include the primarily brick facades of the various buildings, the building arcade along the northern elevation of three pen center, the substantial ornate front entrance to one pen center, the consistent fenestration patterns, concrete bands throughout the various facades, the second-story sky bridge connecting the main building to the property to the south, and the large smokestack with attached plant featuring a full wall of windows along North Fourth Street. There are entrances in a variety of designs and sizes throughout the campus. Fenestration also includes a multitude of windows in materials, sizes, shapes, and configurations. The windows of two and three pen center primarily feature divided light wooden windows, whereas those of one pen center are largely plate glass windows. Structures exhibit two types of roofs. One and two pen center feature flat rubber roofs, while three pen center features gabled roofs clad in asphalt shingles with evenly spaced dormers. The property primarily features a well-maintained grass yard with decorative plantings around the base of the building, and a narrow concrete walkway to the front entrance, all of which is enclosed by a four-foot-high chain-link fence around the front, rear, and side yards. Landscaping on-site is primarily located along the western frontages of the campus buildings, although there are pockets of landscaping along both North Fourth Street and Wiccanisco Street as well. Property differs markedly from the surrounding built environment, even from other institutional buildings such as the Steel School, the Scottish Rite Temple, and the Zenbo Shrine, which feature more ornate architectural elements. While it does not necessarily contribute to the character of the streetscape and neighborhood, its significant presence does establish an architectural and historic character in its own right. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will not be granted approval to rezone the property as downtown center, but will be granted approval for rezoning to commercial neighborhood. The proposed downtown center zoning district is not appropriate for the subject property, given the significant distance to downtown Harrisburg and any other DC-zoned property, and given the significant deviation in use and development allowances between that district and the surrounding neighborhoods. The commercial neighborhood designation is most appropriate for the surrounding community, given that the purpose of the district is to encourage and preserve corridors with a mix of medium and high-density residential and neighborhood retail activities, and to encourage pedestrian-oriented uses, and because there are existing CN-zone properties along North Third Street just to the west. The commercial neighborhood designation, supported by the planning bureau, will provide the applicant with most of the same flexibility to develop the site as expressed in documentation submitted for the proposal, allowing uses such as the multifamily dwellings, retail stores, grocery stores, restaurants, and offices, while retaining minimal regulatory oversight of aspects such as residential density. And if the commissioners would note, the table that was provided in the packets, the, the use designations which are permitted in the downtown center district and not permitted by right in the CN district are the ones that are highlighted. And then the rezoning of the property is necessary to effectuate the redevelopment of the property in a manner that is both most likely and most beneficial to the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you, Jeff. Gentlemen, could you state your names, addresses, and relationship to the project?
Hi.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Dean Cafiero, I'm principal with Pennmark. I live at seven-twenty North Spring Mill Road in Villanova, Pennsylvania. My family's been a real estate investors in Pennsylvania for fifty-one years. And we go all the way from Western Pennsylvania to the, to actually New Jersey, but mostly the Philadelphia area and Lancaster area.
I'm Gregory Holquist, I'm with Pennmark Harrisburg Holdings. My address is eighteen thirty-one Foothill Drive in Huntington Valley, PA.
Are the two gentlemen behind you part of your?
Yes.
Could they state their name and address?
Sure, John Anderson, civil engineer for the project, two-one-three West Main Street, Lansdale, PA.
And I'm Benedict Dubs from sixteen hundred North Second Street here in Harrisburg.
You all have heard the staff report with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
No, we're still, we're still, as, we appreciate you granting these conditions, but we're still asking for the downtown zone. The downtown zone gives us a lot more, because things like, if we wanted to do a hotel in the future, there's going to be areas of the space of this building that's very old that we're not able to use, that we may be able to create self-storage. Everything we do is going to be on a high-end finishes, and nothing to do with changing the look of, of the property. The property is, you know, has a very unique look, as we stated. And we don't want to change the look of the neighborhood also, but we do need the downtown zone in order to proceed with our project.
Jeff?
Well, I think the, the planning bureau's position is, we're maintaining the same position. Again, we've noted some of the differentiation between the CN district and the DC district here in the chart. It's pretty minimal, things like dormitory, auction house, we're not expecting any of those types of things. A college or university, commercial, recreational, and entertainment facility, which we don't even have a definition really for in the zoning code, so it's kind of a weird thing. Launder mats, it's, you know, the hotel that they did reference, I would note that in the CN district, that is a special exception. So the burden of justification on the applicant, should they want to pursue that in the future, would be lesser, but it would still require them to come through the zoning code. And then things like photo processing centers, which I don't expect anybody to do. So, you know, while we do understand the significant obstacles that are present in redeveloping a property not only of this size, but of this specific use, and the need to create as liberal a development framework around that as possible to allow that to happen. Again, our comments about the distance from the downtown center, the downtown center district in the zoning code is really, you know, intentionally placed in downtown, and then east along Market Street and other downtown expansion areas. And it really wouldn't make sense to plop a downtown center in the midst of uptown Harrisburg, and just nominally, really. But given the character of the neighborhood, which is largely row homes and duplexes in the surrounding blocks, you know, the planning bureau feels that this commercial neighborhood gives the applicants the flexibility to do what they feel is necessary without, you know, carte blanche to never come back before the zoning code, or before the, the planning commission or the zoning hearing board. You know, theoretically, the applicant, there is no density regulation in the DC district, so the applicant could put a ten thousand units in there if they really felt like ten thousand efficiency units, if they thought that that made the most, you know, money for that particular reuse of the building. And again, while we definitely support making redevelopment of this site easier, something like that is probably something that I think the city and the community would want to have a say in when it ended up happening. And again, we do feel that comparing the two districts, most of the types of uses that they've said that they. most of the types of uses that they've said that they are looking to put in here would be permitted by right in the CN district, and other uses that, you know, may evolve as time goes on are allowable in the CN district as well, such as like indoor recreation or something like that. I'd also note that the CN district and the DC district have the same off-street parking requirements, which is none. And while that may normally be an issue for a redevelopment of this size in a neighborhood like this, the applicants do note that they have four hundred and forty-six spaces available both on this site and in the garage at the corner of Fourth and Schoolkill Street. And there are surface parking lots just to the north, the Scottish Rite Temple, and across the street from the Scottish Rite Temple. So, you know, we feel that the CN district is appropriate for the neighborhood and still gives the applicants the flexibility that they would need in the future however they decide to go with redevelopment of the sites.
I'm responsible.
If the districts are so undifferent, and I appreciate the comments, but if the districts are so similar, why can't we just have the downtown district? We spent, we bought this property out of bankruptcy. We spent a lot of time. We've lost the state leases that have rented the office space there. We're trying to create additional value there, and it's hard to do it without having, I don't want to say carte blanche, but when we were making an investment of this size in a place like Harrisburg, in a place that could be, this could be the next vacant building, that's a huge plight in Harrisburg if we don't redevelop it. So, we're asking, we're going to make a massive investment. We're asking for a very minor thing to give us the downtown district. The things that Jeffrey just stated are not that different. And again, the investment we're making, the time we're putting in, coming in front of, you know, of these boards is very expensive. I mean, what we're dealing with here, you know, the previous, the nightclub, I don't know what they spent on professionals to be here for something that you guys wanted. And it sounded like, it sounded like the whole city wants that. I think that you're going to find that the project that we're proposing is going to be a first-class project. And I think one of the larger housing developments that would be here in Harrisburg, I understand we just had twenty-nine houses that were just approved or just finished. But before then, I mean, our comparables are showing, what's it called, the Sugar House? The Sugar Glass Factory as one of the, as one of the last places that was potentially fixed up or redeveloped as a fairly larger apartment complex. And from what we see, it's not, it's old, and I wouldn't want to say it's, I don't know if anybody lives there, sorry, but it's not, maybe it was first-class at one time, but it's not anymore. And that's the closest comparable we can come up with when we're figuring out how to price our apartments for rent and what to build, what size, and the finishes that we're going to put inside the units. Anyhow, we have other plans to do a bar, a restaurant bar, brewery, that kind of thing. Is it, bars is a bad word, but like a brewery and where the old incinerator area. There's plenty of places in this building that are going to be hard to get to. In other words, we can't put an apartment in a basement with no windows. And there's plenty of spaces like that in this building that we need to figure out how to use. So, the downtown district certainly gives us the flexibility to figure those things out more than the other district.
Okay. We'll move along here. Usually, I'm the person who gets on if you have enough parking spaces. But I, however, I'm very familiar with the building. Before I retired, four or five years ago, I used to be the executive director of the Workforce Development Agency. We housed our folks in that building, one of those buildings, which was about, I guess we had about forty, fifty people. And then also, at the same time, the state was in there. So, we didn't have any problems with parking because there's a lot of parking spaces there. So, that was one thing I didn't have to question on that. So, that might come up later, but I know there's a lot of force parking.
So, I just want to point out, the staff that we have with us that were with the building for the last, I don't know, ten years or so, we've been, they've been, and us as well, have been plowing the Scottish Rite parking lot, you know, with the intention that people in our building could park there if it was more convenient. And we've done that for years, and I think we want to, we keep that relationship going.
Yeah. I totally agree, because I was also was going to say, whenever we had a big conference there or something, and we had any extra parking spaces, we had agreement with the Scottish Rite and the Zimbo that we could park there during the day and use that. So, I was going to say, recommend to you to use them, but you seem to already know that.
We have a relationship with them. I mean, it's not a written relationship, but it could be, it could be going forward.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. With that, I'm going to let the commissioners ask any questions, then have any concerns. And I'll start with Commissioner McKenzie.
I have no problem with the rezoning from institutional to another more lenient use on that parcel. I certainly don't. And for those of you, I guess there are four of us who were here as we fought through the comprehensive plan for many years. This, if you recall, this is one of those areas of the city that was indicated as a threat. You know, we've all, I've been involved trying to figure out the William Penn, which I'm still not sure is going to, not going to be demolished. You know, we worked on getting the Zimbo mosque on the National Register and worked with several Live Nation and other people how to use that building over time, and have seen this building, you know, and watched it. In fact, many moons ago, was involved in doing the addition, just before they closed, for the new entrance to the hospital. We built it, it got done, and eighteen months later, I think it closed. So, and I hope it wasn't the addition that put them out of business, but we've watched it. And, but the struggle that I have is trying to dissect your strong interest in the downtown, you know, the downtown zoning. You know, first, we always try and avoid spot zoning, parcel by parcel. That's kind of not a good thing. But more importantly, in my mind, the one thing that jumps out at me is the fact that I think, I know it's two hundred and seventy-five or three hundred and twenty-five foot height limitation that giving you this zoning would do. And that, in my mind, we've seen bait and switch, and I don't know you, you speak well, but, you know, why would you need that?
Like I said, it gives us the flexibility, and as Mr. Knight pointed out, the differences are very little. Obviously, we have...
The height differences are substantial.
Right, we're not building...
Twenty-four story building on that site in the midtown is very substantial compared to what neighborhood would...
One thing to point out, we're going after historic tax credits, so that in itself, we can't...
And there are restrictions there, but you do have multiple buildings on the parcel, so one could be historic, the other one could be dropped.
Yeah, but, yeah, so we're going after that. The other thing is, I think, to Dean's point, the reason that we asked for downtown is more, we've got a great plan, we believe, the way it sits right now. You know, it's a hundred units in Building Three, and it's a hundred and fifty-ish in Building One. Building One's an enormous building, you know, it's, there's a lot of first-floor space that was back a house for the hospital. But it's a large building, and there's a lot of need to sort of, you know, in order to make it justifiably financially feasible to make use of. And the other part of it is that, you know, we all believe in the apartment approach here, you know, that at least a hundred is a no-brainer, but two-fifty's a lot of apartments, you know. We're just not sure, you know, we can absolutely support that. So, if we get down the road, we're going to do, our plan is to do, Building Three is phase one, a hundred apartments.
Makes sense.
Building One is phase two with retail, but we may find that we can't support the apartment approach. And if the entire development is banking on, you know, getting the revenue from apartments that you're not going to have anymore, what do you do there?
So, what do you gain? I mean, and as we looked at the uses...
We would gain, we would gain the hotel use by right, which you could do a boutique hotel. I've got a lot of experience with boutique hotels. And maybe fifty units, seventy-five units to support, you know, support the city. But we could also do self-storage. So, the back of, on Fourth Street, there's a courtyard that is fenced in. You can easily pull trucks in, there's loading docks there, and that first-floor space is, you know, part of its below grade. It would really lend itself to self-storage, and maybe even more floors of it, not only for the residents, but for the public. And we would, again, if we're getting historic tax credits, we can't have glowing signs on the outside of the building that says, you know, store here. So, I mean, that's the rationale behind why we asked for downtown. It's not to do whatever we want, whenever we want. It's, what's our contingency plan of the apartments, you know, if we can't do all the apartments?
And it takes tremendous time to get in front of you guys and in front of all the boards that, in order to get approvals for minor things with the small variances that you would need. In this case, we don't, we don't need most of them. And we talked about things like parking. We have parking, we have parking like you wouldn't believe. I don't, I don't think that it's economically feasible to build ground up, you know, in this, I mean, it could be fifty years or a hundred years from now, to do ground up in this neighborhood. We have to use the existing structures, and even at that, we're going to, we're going to be at big numbers per square foot to do the projects we're proposing. Ground-up construction in that area, I mean, if somebody could do a twenty-four story building, I might be, great. We could never do that, and I don't think anybody could. But we have, our plans are to use the buildings exactly how they are, change them a little bit here or there, fix them up. In some cases, we need windows in the first project. And I'm going to say this, I owned a property for years ago in Philadelphia called The Bud Plant. This is how Greg and I first met. And it's not too different from this building, with the exception of, I bought it eleven years after The Bud Plant moved out. What happens to a building like this when it sits around, it turns into The Bud Plant. And that was not three hundred thousand, it was two million square feet of similar buildings. And it reminds me exactly the same thing, except this place had, you know, no broken windows and all these things. It was, it was, it needed to be redeveloped, and it was very, very difficult. At some point, I just, we weren't able to do it, and we sold it to a group that came in with Michael Dell from Dell Computers money that was reorganizing it. But they've been, they've owned it for seven years and haven't done anything with it either. So, you know, we don't want to have to sit on a project like this for seven years. We want to start, we'd like to start renting units a year from now. And in order to do that, we have to not have to go through a process that would handcuff us. We use our own money to build houses like this or to do projects like this. We don't have Michael Dell's money. All of our money is in-house. We don't bring outside money in. The other thing is that if we find that it could become too difficult, we would walk away from it. So, God forbid, we sit on it for seven years and sell it to someone else who's just on it for seven years and nothing happens to it. That's the story, I'm sorry, it was, after I bought it, it was eleven years, seven for me, seven for the next guy. So, that's The Bud Plant in Philadelphia in Ice Town. Now, that could happen here if something doesn't happen to this area. Also, you know, there's talk that the hospital may not stay there. So, you lose the hospital in that space, you don't, you have our space that becomes undeveloped, and then you're going to have a disaster in that area. So, I think that encouraging development, like what we're trying, and by the way, everything I've seen here today, you haven't told us you're not encouraging development, making it as easy as us as possible to develop this property with the money that we're going to have to put out there. I don't, I don't see, or haven't seen or heard of any other investments this large in Harrisburg in a long time. And I think that that's something that we bring to the table that, that I think that no one else has thought of here before. And when we bought this property, it had been for auction three or four times before we, before we bought it. At that point, it fell into bankruptcy, and we bought it out of bankruptcy. So, nobody even bought it at auction. So, we're, for some reason, we're here. We see some potential here, and we, all we need, we're not asking you to help us. We're just asking you not to stop us, not to prevent us from doing what we think we can do to revitalize this area.
I guess I'm still unconvinced of why the project can't happen. I think you saw, I think yourself indicated how relatively easy we were to deal with the folks who came in with more different struggles tonight. A thirty-day application period, a meeting with the planning commission, and possibly zoning, sixty days? If it's something you know is coming in advance on a project that you've already built phase one on, I struggle to see how that is an insurmountable mountain to climb, and it just kind of indicates a disdain for the planning process that we represent here. But I guess, Jeff, I get the idea of storage. That is the most income-producing square footage that you can build, you know, the, you know, like the U-store kind of things. Is, how is that regulated under community neighborhood?
So, a self-storage facility is not permitted by right in, under the CN district, but it's also not permitted by right in the DC district. It requires a special exception. So, if, from what I'm hearing, there's three uses that might complicate the project. It's the hotel, it's the brewery, which isn't permitted by right in either district either, and it's the self-storage, which is not permitted by right in either district. And, you know...
But it's not prohibited.
The self-storage?
I mean, especially, you know, there can be a special exception for those, right?
The special, the self-storage is, yeah, special exception in the DC district. But I think what we're hearing here is that there is certainly, again, to hearken back to one of the earlier cases, the economic hardship of, you know, what is going to go in here? And if, and if the applicants are going to bring that to the table and say, look, it's either this or this thing remains vacant, I mean, to me, that's a compelling argument to say, yes, we'll grant you approval for a hotel or a brewery or a self-storage facility. And I think that, certainly that threat is real. It's a big, difficult property to deal with, and so I think that's there. But I'm also a little confused as to say, like, it doesn't seem like there's a whole development plan out there, but yet we're talking about trying to get, you know, units in within a year. So, there's either a development plan or there's not. And I think there's the other, you know, issue of, what we could do is zoning text amendment, you know, for some of these things, if that's more appropriate, if that's a more appropriate process to free up the allowable uses in the CN district. I don't know that a hotel in a CN district is an unreasonable request. I don't think that's an unreasonable change to the zoning code.
Can you describe the zoning text amendment?
It's very similar to this, except instead of proposing a change to a property, it'd be a change to what's in here. So, in that case, you would ask that for self-storage facility, for example, to change it from not permitted to permitted, you know? And there'd be the justification of, look, this is a huge sprawling campus that's very difficult to redevelop. We think that, you know, a self-storage facility is necessary. To me, that's a variance, but I think the case can be made for that or for a hotel, you know, changing that. Because when you, when we talk about text amendment, it applies to every property that zoned that zoning district in the city. So, if we were going to let a self-storage unit be in the CN... So if we were gonna let a self-storage unit be in the CN District, that would apply to Third Street or, you know, parts of Seventeenth Street and Allison Hill, and that might not be appropriate for those places. But in, in my opinion, it sounds like there's like a few little parts of hangups, and those hangups, I think themselves are the justification for the zoning relief that would be necessary to approve them. So, you know, I, I kind of agree with Commissioner McKissick in that I don't think the one or two maybe differences that are the hangup between the DC and the CN District are an insurmountable hurdle when going through the zoning relief process. Again, as he pointed out, it's about two months to go through. And again, I think the city and probably the community would much rather see a hotel there than they would rather see a vacant building there. And so I think, you know, that, just the, the fact of that matter kind of really lends a lot of support for a zoning relief change to, to the property.
So we've, we've gone through text amendments in other, or attempted text amendments in other situations when it comes to zoning. And it seems like an easy process, but I've never had that happen. I never had that as an easy process. In fact, when we went for text amendments, they always said, "Well, why didn't, why didn't you do something else?" So, you know, I think what we're trying to, so I don't, I, you know, you're not Philadelphia, and certainly not. But I'm, just wanna point out that Philadelphia has some districts, including places that are not downtown districts, where they make it super easy for developers to come in. And we don't do any development in Philadelphia. That's, but it's, so similar but different, right? You're much smaller, but, but also a, a city. They make it super easy for developers to come in with the certain zones that, that they've put in place, in places like, that are not downtown. Almost like, they give it like a downtown district, a, a zone. And I don't know if they, they don't necessarily call it that, but it's similar. It, it's similar to what you have. It's like you have a downtown district. They give you the same ability in, in outside of those zones, when, when they're blighted areas like what, I mean, this isn't necessarily a blighted area, but, but it's not, it's not a great area. And we'd like to make it a great area. But the flexibility that we're asking for would make it that much easier for us and that much, and, and create that much more speed for us to be able to get the area developed. If we can do it in a year, I understand that's optimistic. I understand that we've talked about doing, uh, building one. We're gonna lose the state in the next year. We have a partial state lease. We're gonna lose them the next year, which is why we haven't really considered doing it in building one. I don't know if you're, building one is a large building. Building three is the old, a building that hasn't been really used in a while. It used to be where the nurses, nursing station was, right? So, um, yeah, so the point is, I, I, I think it'd be nice, everybody here's been so nice. I think you could also show that by granting us this, that other developers could come to Harrisburg and make more investments. And I think that by showing, by, by showing this small gesture, I think that it, it invites more investment to Harrisburg, not just our investment. And it'll certainly speed up our process. The way, with the, the, the way we're going right now, we could be five years before, if we, if we go with the old district, with the old, with the zoning you're suggesting. And I'm, I'm not saying, I, I, we appreciate you suggesting that zoning. We're asking you to go a little further, a step further. So we're saying that not only can, gives us the flexibility to do more things, we're not putting a twenty-four story building up, but it also gives us the flexibility to go faster. And I think that's important in Harrisburg because if you don't go fast, you lose the hospital. If you lose, if we, if we build this and we lose the hospital, then you're, then you only have, then you, then you have the hospital as the next problem. You know, there are other problems that are gonna happen if this doesn't happen quickly. And we don't have a problem with vandals right now. We don't have a problem with people stealing copper out of our building right now. That was a massive problem I had. I had murders in, in our building and, I had a murder in our building in, in Philly. I had, you know, countless homeless people, countless scrappers in the building. Obviously, you were, you're talking about police not showing up for your downtown district. I couldn't get the police to show up in this place when we had problems. So you can imagine, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, I'm sure your police are, are very good here in Harrisburg. But they're not gonna, they're not, they're not security guards that are gonna be watching your building and stopping scrappers from going in and stealing the copper out. And if that happens before we're able to start developing, that'll cause a tremendous burden on us and may cause us to abandon the project. So that's one, that's certainly could be a possibility.
Okay.
I just think you're, yeah, I'm, I'm just frustrated that he's trying to threaten the board. If he doesn't get his way to do anything possible that he ever wanna do there, next thing we'll have a refinery and a human waste incinerator to go back to think our women's prison, which we fought over the years. Or the board should remember, we had moved off-site for the three hundred people who showed up not too many blocks away from here when the Mary Kay properties were all being taken down along Front Street to put up, was it eight stories, I think it was?
That's before my time.
To block the view, blocking the view of the river for the entire neighborhood. We fought that back, and, and because the buildings were undevelopable, they couldn't possibly be saved. Drive by there right now, they are in a very productive mode. It just needed somebody with a different mindset. And these are all historic properties, the National Register eligible things there. So I'm, I'm just really struggling. And I, and, and I think we've, I've heard enough on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna cut this off because we, other commissioners have questions and we can come back. So I'm gonna move on to your commissioner at all.
Yeah, yeah, this site, it's surrounded, I think on all four sides by residential neighborhoods. At least in the south, east and west. I can't call it in the north. So I think the merit to what Jeffrey's proposing is that, you know, to rezonate the CN is that anything that would require a special exception, like a hotel, that would give the neighborhood a chance to come out and, and express their, their opinion on that. I mean, granted, they probably had notice of this, but you're asking them to, to tend to a meeting to discuss a, a zoning change, which they're not sure what that even means. But you tell them, "We're having a meeting to entertain a special exception for a hotel three blocks away from your house." They're gonna, they're gonna take interest and show up. So I, I think there's, there's merit in what Jeffrey's proposing. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ray?
I noticed there was a, a community meeting scheduled for yesterday, so I wanted to know how it went.
There was not the best show, showing, partly we think because of the directions that were given and out, so we're gonna have two more next week. And more if need be. There was concern about parking. There was concern about quiet. You know, that the residents like the quietness of the neighborhood. And there was concerns about traffic. So we, we, we presented some of the retail on Fourth, and there was concern about parking getting, you know, gobbled up there by, by some of that. But we were glad to make the comments and, you know, we, we wanna, you know, continue to listen and, and try to incorporate as much of that as we possibly can into the program.
I think when, oh, sorry.
I don't need your answer right now. Chair's best meeting.
Yeah, I'm good.
I wanted to comment on the meeting. When, when the, when the residents were talking about parking, obviously, we're not gonna take up any neighborhood parking. We have our own parking spaces. I think one of the ideas that we had also was, we were talking about the retail, was a potential supermarket, a minor, a small supermarket on, on the first floor that would service the community. Again, we'd have to find a supermarket operator before we could do that, but it was just an idea.
Okay. Commissioner Merrick?
Thank you. I don't wanna beat a dead horse, so I, I'm just thinking about what my fellow commissioners have said thus far. They have raised some very good points. Commissioner McKissick has raised some very good points. You know, look, I am understanding of the need to change the zoning from institution. That is, I think we can all agree on that. To what lengths we go to, to change the zoning, that's what's up for contention. And I think I s-, just thinking through what these changes look like and the relief that's being asked, I, I sit where McKissick sits of just not, not under, not seeing how the downtown center zoning designation would affect such substantial change or enhance the change to the, what you're proposing to do on the site. And I, and I say that also because right now, what I'm hearing is phase one, you do have your heads wrapped around it being primarily a residential remodel. You can do a lot of that with a commercial zone without much issue. Now, going beyond that into phase two, I love the ideas that I'm hearing. I also understand though that right now, they're just ideas. And you really probably don't know what's gonna happen until you get a better financial picture. I understand that as developers. But some of the ideas, the, the hotel, I mean, the brewery, even if it's downtown center, you're still gonna have to come back before the whole process to get, it's not approved anywhere in any zone. It's a great ide-, I, I mean, I love it, but it would still have to go through the formal process. Now, some of the other ideas with the hotel, with the self-storage, I would, I mean, I think the suggestion about a text amendment is a very good one. And that could provide a, a middle ground solution here to kind of compromise on what you're looking to do. The ideas that you have to try to make it more opportunit-, more flexible, not completely prohibiting what you're trying to do. Because at the end of the day, you know, we have to think about how are we impacting the city as a whole with these changes? You know, if we make an adjustment to these properties with the downtown center designation. My, one of my concerns is, is knowing that there is a lot of stake for, for the folks that are investing in this property, that I have heard you say you were willing to walk away from it if it does not become viable financially, you know, timeline-wise. And so then that means somebody else comes in and would buy this property off of you. And who wants to say what they would do if this was don't, zoned downtown center? What's gonna prohibit a new developer from coming in and deciding, "Well, this is don't, zoned DC. I'm gonna go ahead and build that two-hundred-foot-high building in this neighborhood."
I, I, with, with respect, I think if someone were gonna do that, it would be, it would be a good thing. I don't think that anybody will do it.
Well, looking at the comprehensive plan that we've worked on in the city for a number of years, the analysis that's been done by folks we've hired, different entities, engineers, architects, land developers, land planners, you know, we have analyzed this neighborhood of what would be preferred to see there. Some of what you're, and a lot of what you're suggesting is preferred to be, to be seen, you know, in this neighborhood. But the downtown center zoning opens it up to things that we were not considering with the comprehensive plan. You know, and I don't know if you've engaged with other community stakeholders, you know, think, entities like Credic or other, you know, improvement district entities in, in the area. I don't know. You know, they would have thoughts to weigh in as well to what the city needs, you know, with development. I think that's all I'm gonna say on that.
Commissioner Jordan?
Well, most of my questions have been answered from conversation with other commissioners. Just to confirm, I think you may have mentioned it, have you started engaging with any prospective tenants, businesses or otherwise?
So we're, we're, we've, so when it comes to office, that doesn't, they don't exist. So we have, we have a, sorry, it becomes a large office users, it doesn't exist. We have a, a unique business plan that we've used with building two, which we, we try to rent small offices to individuals that have small businesses. And it's something like a WeWork or Regis, and we've been very successful with that. In fact, actually, we're at the point where the building is filling up. We're gonna be going for, we, we, we may intend to keep the middle as office because of the small business that, that we have mentored and helped get started there. So this could be anything from a, a realtor, a lawyer, someone that runs, just needs an office to work out of. You know, back during the pandemic, a lot of people thought working from home was a good thing until their dogs barking on the phone and, you know, I could overhear that, or your dog's in the background, the kids are in the background. We've all seen these very funny videos online, and people are still interested in working close to home, but not at home, and not necessarily going to work. So the small businesses that we've, we've mentored here have done, done well. We're, we're applying for, we're applying for permits to develop the top floor into smaller offices where it's not used right now of, of building, it's the four-story building, building three, building two, sorry. And I think that what probably happens is as we work on, you know, we're, we're using the existing space and not necessarily beautifying the space. It's, the space is okay, it's, it's usable. The top floor will be better, will, will look nicer than the older first three floors. But what will probably happen when we bring the apartments there is we're expecting that people from those apartments may also wanna have that WeWork, a, a live-work, you know, play type of a community. And that's one of the things with, with.
What about, what about retail? Have you engaged any possible retail tenants?
No, it's too, it's too early to do that. You know, we, we've had, we've had some interest from some medical tenants. Right now, some of the medical tenants were prohibited from, from, from renting too because of, of, of an agreement with UPMC. Some of them were not. So there could be, there could be, like, we're not allowed to, what was the medical, medical use, we're not allowed, uh, what is it?
Urgent care.
Oh, urgent care was one, was one.
Yeah, the restriction, that may not be there if certain things happen.
Okay.
But so we, we saw something like, like doctors could possibly be a use, like a, you know, small, small, like an eye doctor or, or something like that. That could be a use in, in, in parts of the building, maybe on the first floor, some of the retail-facing areas.
But. One thing to mention, is the lead in this project is apartments. It's multi-residential. That's the driver. And we've got forty properties around the country. That, that's all we do is retail leasing. So it's really a, it's a core excellence that we have. We're, obviously, but long-term, we're concerned about making sure that we have the right retail. Like, we wanna provide what makes sense to the neighborhood, but we're not concerned about finding those tenants. It's really locking down the, the multi-residential, which we've done a, a lot of work on doing that. It's just, the only, really, the only wrinkle, potential wrinkle is, can we do two-hundred-and-thirty or two-hundred-and-fifty or whatever it is apartments with confidence, with utmost confidence? And the answer is, you know, we, we would wanna have a contingency plan for our development of this magnitude. And that's really what drove the downtown center zoning desire was two things. One, to have the ability to do, I have a lot of experience with boutique hotels in my career. It's a great thing to provide in an area like this. And a fifty, seventy-five unit boutique hotel would be really, I think, great for the, the city and, and the area. And the other is self-storage. And that's really what drove that, is a contingency plan because of the size of this development.
Just last question. The meeting that you had on April first, was that your first community engagement meeting?
We, so last week, we, we just got our, you know, got started. And so we took a letter around and got some signatures. And then on Monday, we had our first small. And then, uh, on Monday, we had our first, uh, small meeting. Last night, we had a second meeting, we were hoping it would be bigger, uh, and then we'll have more, uh, we, you know, we, we wanna continue to do that.
I think, I'm not sure which one of you was, you had mentioned, um, you had some parking concerns as far as the actual turnout?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we, so the, the turnout, we thought, we had heard was not great because the directions on the flyer.
Okay, that's.
Weren't great.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask you, what are you, what are you gonna do going forward to ensure that it's easier to find and attend to it?
Yeah, we're gonna, well, we're gonna go around again and, and knock on doors and hand up, hand the flyers out and leave the flyers if they're not at home. So we do have folks that know, that, uh, take care of the building that live here, uh, in Harrisburg, um, one that's in the neighborhood, uh, so, you know, we'll continue to do it that way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, you. Is there anyone from the public? No one in the center? Oh, sorry. Just state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Julia Mallory, my address is twenty-six thirty-nine North Fourth Street, and so, um, the front of my house faces, I guess what you would consider to be part of the back, the entrance to, uh, is it building three, um, where this, uh, plan is. So I just wanna bring up a couple things, one, I just wanna thank the commissioners for at least recognizing, uh, the potential, uh, problems for the zone change, but, um, I think, so we did, there was a meeting yesterday, um, I'm not sure that there were other prior meetings, that was, I believe, the first meeting. Um, I, I think the, to be quite frank, I think the turnout was low because residents were given less than a week notice that this meeting was happening. Um, I will say that the overall, um, I think the reality is, development has to happen in the city, um, you know, nothing stays the same for forever, you know? I was born in Polyclinic Hospital, they do not deliver babies there anymore, right? So we know things are going to change. I think residents, you know, had all different types of concerns, um, even just the volume of, like, oh, there's gonna be a hundred or two hundred new people living in this, you know, new residents living in this small, um, area. You know, even that I think was concerning for some folks, but I think people can recognize change has to happen. I think what is concerning though, is that the meeting, what was emphasized was absolutely apartments, because people did, you know, questions about parking, um, and we know they have these big sprawling lots, and so I think those spaces are available. Um, there was mention of possible retail, like a coffee shop, or maybe even a bookstore, or, um, a jazz club, you know, those were, those were the things that were emphasized yesterday. So to hear today was being emphasized, um, a hotel or, um, self-storage or brewery, those things were, I don't even know if they were referenced, and I definitely know they were not emphasized in that meeting. So I feel like there's just a certain lack of transparency that feels, um, it feels discomforting, quite frankly. So I think we recognize development has to happen, so even if the, you know, the, the commission, you know, with the, the first zone change, you know, that makes sense, mixed-use commercial, that makes sense, but I think to grant carte blanche, that's very concerning to me because there's multiple things that impact that. So I think, and y'all, I mean, y'all are the experts, so I know y'all are familiar with bait and switch, um, you know, and then to the other point that was brought up, if, if this happens and then this developer decides, oh yeah, we're just outta here for whatever reason, then the next folks can just basically have, you know, free range to do whatever, um, works for them that may not necessarily work for the residents. And so I know at some point, the reality is change happens, we all have to live in harmony, but I think greater consideration needs to be given to the folks that have, you know, that live in this neighborhood and, um, I mean, I personally would not want to, like, oh, a self-storage, or that just seems out of place in this neighborhood, quite frankly. Um, so I, I just, I just have concerns, and I think maybe even with more time, right? Cause at this point, I'm not for it or against it, but I think with more time and with more understanding of what actually is being proposed, I think, I think different conclusions can be reached, but I think right now in the infancy, and like I said, there was a, there was a small turnout yesterday, but residents were given less than a week's notice that that meeting was happening. Um, and so I also don't think, I know someone mentioned like, oh, people don't even know what a zone, a zoning change is, and that could be possible. Um, and I think, I'm, uh, I'm almost a hundred percent sure that there was no discussion about changing it to, um, a downtown zoning and the, and explanation of what that would entail. So I think just people need to have more, um, time and more access to information so that they can make informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, in fairness to the applicant, I, I believe that your primary concern, uh, goal right now is the apartments, and, but, and this is plan B if the apartments don't work out, the, the, the breweries and the, and the other things.
It's apartment retail is really what we have here. It's just if, we wanna have a successful building, you know, at the end of the day, and if it was the contingency plan, you know, an exit strategy is sometimes what they call for other reasons, but here it's, we wanna own and hold this building for a long time. Uh, we just wanna make sure we're gonna be successful.
Uh, just wanna, I, I know I talked about selling the other building we had, um, Penmark invests in properties and doesn't generally, uh, once we own them, we don't sell them, we generally stay in, I think it's probably the only one we haven't, uh, we haven't stayed in, 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 uh, in, uh, in years, in, in thirty years prob- probably. Um, and, um, like, with, you know, minor property here or there, we might sell a little piece off of, of something. Uh, Starbucks we're developing, we're gonna sell the Starbucks, but we own the rest of the center. Um, but, oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Gloria Martin Roberts, I live at twenty-four zero-nine North Third Street in Harrisburg, I've been a resident there for over forty years. I'm gonna tell you a little story. My first home was purchased when I was twenty-three. I bought it at eighteen twenty-two Chestnut Street, right across the street from my junior high school, Edison. I lived there for several years, a beautiful neighborhood, uh, very tight neighborhood. Everybody cared about their properties, and then the school district decided to sell Edison. And so me, my neighbors, we went to a meeting and said, what are you gonna do with that building? They said, well, we're gonna sell it to a developer out of Maryland, and they're going to put handicap and elderly in the building. And we said, okay, that sounds all right with us, we can live with that. All of you sitting there know exactly what Edison Village is today, what it looks like, and what that neighborhood looks like. I was forced to sell that home, because after they did that, I, I worked for the Commonwealth, and I traveled extensively for the Commonwealth, and so my home was burglarized about four or five different times. Uh, the last time it was burglarized, we were fortunate enough to catch one of the men that burglarized my home, and he said, the reason he burglarized my home is because they would sit up in the window in the morning and watch me come out, and, and I was dressed so nice, my home must have been nice. This is a true story. Now, I support this project because I've lived long enough in that neighborhood to be a little bit uneasy about the hospital being vacant for all these years. So I was excited to learn that we had a developer that was interested in coming in and doing some great things at the Polyclinic Campus. I am hearing though, some differences in what I've been told. I wa- didn't hear anything about a hotel, okay? Um, I don't support downtown zoning because of Edison. Okay, if it changes hands, who knows what people are gonna come in and do? This may not seem like a, this may seem like a mediocre neighborhood to you, but it's great to us, those of us living there. It's quiet, thank God, my home has never been burglarized. Uh, we take care of our properties, we respect our properties, we invest in our properties, and we want our properties to be respected. I think if you give this anything but commercial zoning, you will put all of us homeowners in hot seats, we won't know what's coming or what's going. And we're not supporting it, and I know that, and they did have more than one meeting, they had a meeting with my neighbors on Monday. And my neighbors are concerned about the zoning, not so much what they have proposed to put there, but some of the things that you commented on tonight were missing in that presentation in terms of what you wanna put on site. We're excited about them, you know, having apartments and market rate apartments, okay? As many of you know what my position here is in the city, so, you know, we deal with low income and affordable housing and all of that, I deal with that every day. We need market housing, we have to have a mixture of that in this city in order for it to prosper. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with a jazz club, a restaurant, a coffee shop. I think it actually will bring our community together, almost like the Broad Street Market does for us, for those of us especially, they grew up in the Broad Street Market every Saturday, that's where we met our friends. So I am not, I'm gonna ask you to just err on the side of caution and keep this commercial, because they can always come back if they need to. That's the thing, if we were just saying, okay, you can never come back, this is it, it's cast in stone, that's one thing, but that's not the way it is, they have the ability to come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Is there anyone else in the middle? To my right? Commissioner, uh, we've heard everything here, um, and as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to keep it commercial, that's my only thought, um, but I'll go with whatever the commissioner states.
Can I, may I make a comment?
No, no. No, you made your comments.
No.
Um, commissioners, um, could I get a motion?
I would be prepared to make a motion that we proceed with, uh, the approval, but based upon the community neighborhood designation with the conditions also stated by, by a staff. And, uh, we don't wanna be holding the project up the first hundred and fifty, we know time is money, money is time, uh, but I think that the, the other aspects of it are still troubling and not resolved in my mind, and I couldn't with good, so, uh, I would make the motion to approve on that basis.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved a second for approval of this project with the, all, the four conditions, uh, is in the report, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained, motion carried. So our motions.
It's only one condition.
The condition was just, yeah, B, C, and it's that D, C there is.
Oh, I'm looking at another.
Yeah.
Was it C, yeah, right.
Okay. With that condition, okay. And abstained, please, motion carried.
Since, since we're last, like, I'd like just to address Gloria's, uh, comment, I think she had a valid, very valid comment just now. Um, one, one of the things we, uh, w- was really not something that we're pursuing would be a really, would be something that we would, uh, only pursue in the event apartments don't work, is something like a boutique hotel. So she, she's right, we did not mention a boutique hotel, because that is like the last case, uh, uh, scenario for us. Um, we think that this is gonna be three hundred apartments, two hundred and sixty, whatever it is, three hundred and sixty apartments, uh, with, you know, so, some potential, some doctor's offices, and what we currently have is that we, is that, uh, work, work, uh, live environment, we love it to be a play environment also, but not sure we have the room for it. Um, some of our other projects, so we do, um, uh, sports facilities as well, so it could be an element there, uh, uh, something that we do with the gym or something like that, but, and that would also, uh, be for the whole neighborhood. But, uh, anyway, we didn't bring that up, but it's something that could be, uh, part of the things that we would look at.
Look forward to your creativity.
Yeah.
What's that?
I said, very much look forward to your creativity.
Okay, thank you, thank.
Which you definitely are.
You should tell the, of course, the, uh, when the community meet with them again, you can tell them that, tell them what you just told them.
Sure, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, we're not, we didn't intentionally mislead anybody, but that was just something else, doubt, that could, that could be, and, and again, we would have to keep the, the structure in order to qualify for the tax credits, we're not putting like a, 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 a new buil- a new structure up, uh, like, like a Holiday Inn Express or something like this, right, right?
We gotta say.
Just, one, I guess, one more thing, so the, when people think of, of self-storage, they think of these, uh, you know, small sheds and whatnot, it's not what we're thinking, we're thinking about, you know, having it, self-storage is a, as a component that is not visible to the, to the, to the outside, yep.
Okay, I guess we, you tell them we have one more, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We have one more.
Other one?
You have another one, I didn't know we had any there, so. Uh, this is item number six, this is a preliminary, uh, final subdivision application for twenty-six oh-one North Third Street, it's zone INS, it's filed by Gregory Haw- Hawquist with Penmark Harrisburg Holdings LLC, is to divide the existing property into four separate parcels to effectuate redevelopment of the entire site, yep?
Uh, so the applicants are proposing to subdivide the existing property into four separate parcels to effectuate redevelopment of the entire site. The applicant has submitted a accompanying zoning map amendment for the property to promote redevelopment of the site as a mixed-use development, uh, property is the same. Uh, the planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons, the proposed subdivision will create individual lots which are in conformance with the applicable zoning regulations regarding development standards, and the proposal will help effectuate the conversion of a sprawling, largely vacant institutional campus into a mixed-use town-center development, providing a significant number of new housing units and commercial businesses for future residents of the site and existing residents of the neighborhood.
Okay. No conditions?
No, um, and the reason I put this second instead of first, usually I would have done something as simple as a subdivision first is because I wasn't sure how the conversation about the zoning map amendment would go, and therefore whether the applicants would wanna choose to continue, but, um, or like request a tabling of this per- particular thing, but I just spoke, uh, Mr. Hawquist, and he, you know, said that they would like to still go forward with the app subdivision review.
Um, commissioners, uh, that's straightforward with the subdivision. Um, if you have any questions or concerns, uh, I'll just start with Commissioner, I guess it, or two?
Pretty straightforward, as well.
Commissioner Reed?
No questions.
Commissioner Merritt?
No, no questions.
Commissioner Jordan?
No questions.
Okay, anyone from the public? For, I guess, the subdivisions? No one in the middle, no one to the right? Commissioners, could I get a motion?
A motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
It's been moved a second to approve the subdivisions, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carried. Good luck, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Jeff, if we're, uh, anything else?
Uh, nothing else, uh.
Okay. Mister, is anything for the good of the water? If not, can I get a motion for approval? I mean, approval, on my motion to jury. Your second?
Second.
Move the second, you stand your.
Hey, Jeff, I'm Dean Kifro, yeah, by the way, I appreciate everything, honestly, we're looking for a little, we're.
Yeah, well, you know, I think, um, like I said. Yeah, well, you know, I think, um, like I said.